I'd like to call this council meeting to order. Would you please stand for the pledge? Mr. Travis, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
The United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Either meditation or prayer? Thank you. Angie, would you do roll call, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Present.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Mishler.
Present.
Councilman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilman Crabtree. Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
President. We have a quorum. Just a reminder to everyone, please turn your phones on airplane mode, silence. We'd appreciate that. And for those using the mic to speak, make sure you speak into the mic so we can hear you. And anyone that's on WebEx, that's on the screen, you have to put your name on the screen, not just your initials. If your name is not up there, you will be removed so we can identify who it is that's speaking or engaged. Thank you. Minutes for approval for August 5th, 2024 council meeting. Can I get a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Hines, second by Mr. Fish. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. We have presentations. We have recognition of the martial arts team from Steve's Gym, AAU Taekwondo National Championships. Mayor?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good evening. I have a special presentation for... Steve Travis, would you step up for just a second? Steve is very well-known to our community, former police officer, and has been operating Steve's Gym for...
Since...
Steve has been operating this since 1972, for all of you who wondered. And Steve has been doing a fabulous job with the kids regarding Taekwondo. And I'd like to read this certificate of recognition for some very special athletes that he has.
Mayor, could we have those athletes stand?
Yes. Would you have them come up as well? I hear medals jingling. Okay, would you guys stand in front of me? You got some real... You guys got... You have gold today. All right. All right. And I'll read this, and then maybe, Steve, you can talk a little bit more about their achievement. But let me read this first. Okay. "In the City of Elkhart, certificate of recognition, Steve's Gym, Gold Medal, 2024 season. Whereas, Steve Gym is a martial arts studio located in Elkhart, Indiana, specializing in the training of Taekwondo and Hip Kido, Hip Kido for students of all ages. And whereas the AAU Martial Arts Team traveled to Florida in July of 2024 to compete in the Taekwondo National Championships. And whereas, over the course of six days, ten members competed in over thirty events, earning sixteen gold medals, one silver, and five bronze. And whereas, with the youngest member at four years old..." That wouldn't be you, would it? Okay, I'm sorry. I get... That member's not here, okay? All right, all right. And the way you're looking at me, I am sorry. Blame it on my head, not my heart. It's your birthday, you know you're six years old, don't you? Okay, at this time, I wish I had a black belt, because you look like you could take me right now. Okay. All right, where was I? All right, I got a little intimidated there, Steve. Okay. "Whereas, the youngest member at four years old isn't here. This seasoned and versatile team competed in specialties like sparring and board breaking. And the national success of the athletes from Steve's Gym illustrates the..." And the national success of the athletes from Steve's Gym illustrates the top-notch talent and instruction that is present within our community. And whereas, the City of Elkhart recognizes students Jessica Bingham, Sarah Lee, Charlie Lee..." Okay, you're Charlie. Okay, got you, Charlie. Thank you. Apollo Mojer. Okay. Delilah Wright, Amelia Wright, along with coaches Jared Bingham, Mark Davis, and Brittany Mojer. For their stellar 2024 season. Now, therefore, I, Rod Robertson, Mayor of Elkhart, present this certificate of recognition to Steve's Gym 2024 AAU Team. The City of Elkhart is in awe of your accomplishments. Rod Robertson, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you.
Anything you'd like to add?
Have anything you'd like to add? Thank you.
I'd like to thank the counsel for recognizing our athletes. We've been doing this, like I said, since 1972 in the community, although I haven't been... I've been working out, but I didn't buy a studio until '78, so I can't say I have over 50 years yet, but I got 46 then, for sure. Okay? And these athletes, I've had several national champions throughout my career training people. The thing that was special about this group is every one of these athletes this time got at least one gold medal. And that's something that, you know, a lot hasn't... I've never done that before. That was a first, so that's why I thought it was a good idea to recognize them. And the other thing is, this is actually a community team for our community, because we've been in the community so long. But it's not only just a community team for our community, it's all these athletes are amateur athletic union sanctioned, and all the coaches, they all have to go through an amazing amount of work in order to get to this level, you know? And the expenses are horrendous these days. You know, six days in Fort Lauderdale, Florida, hotels, food, and all that. And Coach Brigham, you could come up here real quick and explain a little bit about how you got all the sponsors. And that's why I say it's a community team, because we had so many sponsors this year in Elkhart community, you know, in order to make it happen for these athletes.
So our biggest fundraiser that we had this year was banners. So we would hang banners from our gym. We had, I think, 22 of them, and within those 22 sponsors, we raised over $10,000, which is a huge number, but it still didn't cover all of the expenses. To send a team of this size down to Fort Lauderdale, I think, was about $14,000. So the kids had a few fundraisers. We sold donut certificates door-to-door from Martin's. This year, we sold flowers. We did a dinner and auction. But we did really lean on the community a lot. Senior Grandmaster Travis has got a lot of connections in the community, and so we had Witch Hammer Tattoo, we had Billings Funeral Home just right on down the line. The community was very, very supportive of the team, and we would not have been able to go if it wasn't for the support of the local businesses. So we really appreciate them.
I have one from you. You sold it. I'm sure I'd bought one from him. You got it?
Can we get a picture with him?
Absolutely. Can we take a...
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Okay, we'll take a picture, and then we'll get back to business.
Feel free to take it down.
Congratulations. Thank you.
And we're going to take a two-minute recess, in case you guys want to leave. If you want to stick around, you're more than welcome. But if you want to leave, you can do that right now, if you'd like to leave, because we could be here for a minute.
He was serious.
Well, boy, he is.
Nice sport.
Thank you. Okay, back to order of business here. An unfinished business, there are no reports of council committees. Ordinance on second and third reading. Angie, would you please read proposed ordinance 24-0-26 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-26. An ordinance approving the third major amendment to the Concord Mall planned unit development to change the zoning standards from B4 Regional Business District to R4 Multi-Family Residential District, B2 Community Business District, and M1 Limited Manufacturing Standards.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to adopt this on second reading?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hinky, second by Mrs. Hines. Counsel discussion, Mr. Huber.
Good evening, Mike Huber, Development Services Director, City of Elkhart. So the ordinance in front of you this evening, the property owners, industrial, commercial properties, who are renovating the remainder of the current Concord Mall property, acquired the former theater site. The action that was taken, that we are being asked to verify tonight, is, or to confirm tonight, is to bring it under the same PUD rules that were established during the amendment of the PUD for the remainder of the mall property. So it's pretty straightforward. We're just adding this into the rest of the amended PUD to follow those same rules.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Fish?
Thanks, Mike, for being here. Yeah, it sounds pretty simple. Nothing stood out, but what is the relationship now with this potential builder, or do we have that potential builder yet?
So this only just is... All this is doing is taking a piece of property that wasn't included in the previous PUD. It wasn't acquired and owned by ICP at that time. So all they're doing is they acquired that, they're going to tear the theater down, and all this does is just extend the rules of the rest of the PUD to this.
Yeah, very good, Dan. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Huber. I'll open it up to the public, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak on this proposed ordinance? Seeing none, I'll return to the council floor. Is there any other council discussion? Mr. Hinky?
While you were up here, but the ultimate plan for this partial, do we have an ultimate plan?
So according to the renderings of what we've seen previously, this is part of the property that would be designated for future residential development. That doesn't mean it isn't necessarily going to... It is necessarily going to be that. We haven't heard... They're currently just trying to get through the renovation of the existing mall property, and I know they have had some conversations with a developer or two about housing, but I'm not aware of any new agreements on any housing development yet.
...plan, and then I don't recall from the original presentation how much housing they had in their original proposal?
It was, I think, somewhere around 10 or 12 acres of the total were designated for housing.
But as far as capability by units, do we remember that?
Probably two to 220 units, something like that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, turn it back to the council. Angie, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Third and final, please.
Second.
I got a motion from Mr. Hinky, second from Mr. Fish, for third and final. Angie, would you read this by title, please, and do a roll call vote?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-26. An ordinance approving the third major amendment to the Concord Mall planned unit development to change the zoning standards from B4 Regional Business District to R4 Multi-Family Residential District, B2 Community Business District, and M1 Limited Manufacturing Standards. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Hinky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero on third and final.
Thank you. Angie, would you read proposed ordinance 24-0-27 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-27. An ordinance prohibiting the camping and storage of personal property on public property except in designated camping areas.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to adopt this on second reading, please?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fish, second by Mrs. Hines. Counsel discussion. Seeing... I'm sorry, Mr. Fish?
I would be willing to entertain my amendment right now.
Do you have an amendment? Yes. Just specify where it is in ordinance, so we can...
Sure. I would like to offer an amendment under Section 5. You'll turn there. Just a simple change. We'll take out the words from the word city, all the way down to mayor, and insert the following. "The chief of police, the chief of fire, and the building commissioner, or their designees, are authorized and empowered to enforce this ordinance on behalf of the city, including issue citations, and take any other lawful civil action to prosecute violations of this chapter in accordance with the provisions herein, or other applicable procedural laws." Period.
Thank you. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
This motion is second to Mr. Fish's amendment. Counsel discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any other amendments, any other discussion? Seeing none, I will... Sorry, Mr. Mishler.
Yes, thank you. I have a proposed amendment under Section 1, Paragraph A. The paragraph states, "Camp or camping means to pitch, erect, or occupy camp facilities, or to use camp equipment, or both for the purpose of, or in such a way, as will permit or facilitate remaining overnight for one or more nights, or parking a trailer, recreational vehicle, or other vehicles for the purpose of remaining overnight for one or more nights." My amendment is to remove the word "one night" and insert "more than one night."
Amendment, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Seeing none, we'll vote, are there any other amendments? Seeing none, we'll open up to the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this ordinance? Please step forward, state your name, please.
Hi, my name is Joanne Weeks. I do live in the City of Elkhart, and I am against this for the simple reason that I don't think it actually addresses how to rectify homelessness. And plus, criminalizing it will also impact people who already are at risk. They have no jobs, they have no money. How are they going to pay their fines? How are they going to get a job? And where will they go? I don't hear a plan in any of this that will address any, you know, plan to make it better, only to get rid of it. And we just can't push them from pillar to post. They got to have a plan. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Thomas?
Thank you. Brian Thomas, resident, City of Elkhart. First and foremost, I'm asking the council, after just discussion, to consider passing this ordinance and putting into effect, if nothing more than the fact that it puts another tool in the hands of our enforcement officials to end up, in the long run, helping the homeless and the displaced within the City of Elkhart. I do have one question. In your first "whereas," it says, "Whereas the City of Elkhart intends to exempt from the enforcement of this ordinance any person for whom space in an overnight shelter, transitional shelter, or other accommodation is not available." Then, to cover that, I believe Section 6 was added. "Any person who is indigenous and homeless is exempt from the application of this chapter unless an overnight sleeping accommodation is available and/or provided transportation." I think the wording on Section 6 is a little awkward. The "whereas" says that the person is exempt if they can find a shelter. Whereas 6 says they're exempt unless there's a shelter found. So you might want to consider that after public discussion. The second thing is, to nitpick a little bit, we have camping, as Councilman Mishler mentioned, includes, or somebody mentioned, camp equipment includes, but not limited, to tarp, cots, beds, sleeping bags, hammocks, cooking utensils, what you would expect to find in a so-called encampment. But what... How is a person who is in a public space, say on a park bench, just sleeping? No cot, no hammock, no sleeping bag, no equipment? Do they fall under the existing loitering ordinance? Do... How are they handled? Or if they're just sleeping on the ground? No piece of cardboard, no tent, no piece of visqueen that would constitute camping equipment? So that's something that you might bring up in your second discussion. I do hope you pass the ordinance. We discussed this last year, year and a half ago. We probably all got the same agreements, for and against. And I'll be anxious to see what the vote is. Over and above this ordinance, it addresses public spaces, which is fine. That takes care of a problem that we have. My concern, and I don't believe it's anything that you can really address, other than the fact that I can stand up here and express my view, is the people that own private property are thrown under the bus. I had a situation in the last two weeks where a homeless gentleman moved all of his belongings into the parking lot that I own on North Main Street. He had a shopping cart, a bed, a bike, a cooking grill, boxes of clothes, just appeared overnight. So I let it go, and he was there the next day, and the next day, and the next day. The straw that broke the camel's back is he hauled in an industrial-sized refrigerator. How he got it there, I don't know. Where he found it, I don't know, but he got it there. So all of a sudden, and then I'm getting phone calls, "Do you realize that this is happening on your property?" So I checked it many times, could not find the gentleman hanging around, or where he was at. I approached Guidance Ministry, and they were of great help in announcing at their dinner meeting that if this is you, you're on private property, and we would like... You need to move. I also called the police and asked what the procedure was for someone on private property, and they said, "If it's on private property, you have the opportunity to remove his belongings at any point in time, but you pay for it. You pay the people to haul it away, or you haul it away yourself," which, I'm sorry, I can't lift an industrial-sized refrigerator. Luckily, and I posted a note on the gentleman's belongings, that these items were on private property, and you have till such-and-such a date to move them, and then I stated that I was going to remove the items two days later. He removed the items. He removed the items, except for a few things, a few manageable things, and he moved a half a block down the alley, and he's on private property again, or again. So my worry about this is that if the homeless are not allowed or are moved from a camping site where they're staying, that they're going to come into doorways, areas that are private property and not deemed as public property. We've had that problem before. I mean, if you drive down Main Street, you'll see people sleeping in doorways, and I'm just afraid this is going to push them that way. But it's kind of a catch-22 because you cannot legislate what happens on private property. But it does seem disingenuous that private property owners have to foot the bill if a homeless person decides to encamp or take up residence on their property. So address those two issues within the wording, if you would, and just take my comments on the private property to heart. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak? Make sure you sign in. If you haven't signed in, be sure to sign in.
Lori King. I wanted to thank each of you who have reached out to me. Seven of you have reached out to me and spent a lot of time with me the last two weeks talking about this ordinance. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. As discussed, the language of the proposed ordinance is very broad and nondescript, and such words as "intend," strive to minimize the adverse effects and substantial risks. The plumb line and the measure stick for this is not given, thus leaving the interpretation to individual subjective decisions. And before I forget, I'd like to request more to, more auditorium on expanding the ordinance if it is passed for five-year period to give the city time to measure the success of the ordinance. I personally have grave concerns regarding making sleeping in vehicles for a night illegal in the city of Elkhart. What if somebody gets tired and they pull over because they need a little bit of sleep? What about somebody who needs, feels like, "Hey, man, I've had too much to drink, I'd better pull over"? I want him to. Or if he's sick and he starts feeling nauseated. I've had that actually happen to me, and I pulled over until it passed, and I actually went to sleep for a bit. This concerns me that we would make that illegal. I'm absolutely certain that most of our problems in the city regarding camping involve people who can indeed go to our shelter, but they choose not to go. Ordinances such as curfew, littering, nuisance laws need to be enforced on these people. One of my jobs is to partner with other agencies to help those who want and need help to transition from homelessness to being housed. These people do want, do not want to be homeless. They are working towards independence, and I'm concerned that this could hinder those who cannot go to our homeless shelter and must, must be outside. These people are trying to be low-key, they're often hiding as if they're fugitives, and they're trying to stay on the right side of the law. They don't want any trouble. One lady, I'm going to tell you just one story. One lady lives in her car. She cannot go to the homeless shelter due to her mental health condition. She is not causing any trouble, she's not littering and being a nuisance in any way, yet sleeping in her car will be against the law if this ordinance is passed. What in the world is this poor lady supposed to do? You know? I feel really bad about it. Saying that it won't affect those who cannot go to the shelter... Well, I could sit here and I could give you names of people, the places, the dates, the times, which park, and so on and so forth, of people who could not go, and yet they were harassed, "Get up, move." And then they try and hide somewhere else, and then somebody would find them, "You got to get up and go." Multiple times per night. This happens now. Why do we think that that's going to change, even though they know that they can't go? And so I just, I just have some concerns about that. I don't think, I'm not for this ordinance. I am for us doing something about all of these camping and the people that want to do their own thing and get high and get drunk and all of the carousing they do. I do think we need to do something about that. They need to get help, and if they won't, then what are we going to do about it? What's the plan? You know? But unfortunately, how I read this, this is going to affect a lot of people that, they have no choice. It encompasses them as well. And so I have some concerns. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the audience? Is anyone else?
No.
Pardon me?
We got plenty.
I just need to know who else is coming.
I think you just heard a wonderful member of our community, Reverend Pastor Lori King, who knows about as much as anyone about working with the homeless in this community, is doing wonderful work to try to help these people. Unfortunately, in our country, we have a situation now where we have more and more homeless people than we ever had before, and more and more people that aren't homeless because of, you know, drug addiction or other problems. Because of the cost of rent and the cost of what we know. I've been in Elkhart about 26 years. During the first 13 years that I was here, the child poverty rate in the city doubled. Now it's quadruple or quintuple, or sextuple what it was then. We have a lot of problems with poverty in this country, in this world, and in this city. It really breaks my heart to see people who are camping, who appear to be just elderly and appear to be sober, and appear to not be any problem in the community. We have plenty of rules and regulations on the books to arrest anyone that's a public nuisance, that's intoxicated, that's high on drugs, causing problems. That's okay. I don't think any, there's very few members of the public would have a problem with that. But the homeless are the most vulnerable members of our population. Government exists to address the problems that the private sector cannot address and will not address. Those problems are the highest with the homeless. This ordinance criminalizes someone's intent to just simply live and struggle and get by as best they can. I'm philosophically opposed to this, just because of the basic respect for human rights and human dignity. And I hope you all feel that way, too. I've met each and every one of you, and you all appear to be great members of the community that go to community events, help people. You appear to be involved in social events and community events and volunteer events. I can't imagine that any of you would want to make things more difficult and make things rough on the most vulnerable members of our community, the homeless. So I hope that this ordinance will be unanimously voted against by all of you, because I know each and every one of you, and I know that you appear to be good people. So here's your chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Thomas Kalijah, 500 State Street. Well, it seems that the people that probably know way better than I do about how this bill will affect the people we're trying to manage, you know, I'm not going to pretend to be super-sensitive for the homeless. You know, people become homeless for various reasons. I could become homeless due to an economic downturn in the RV industry. That wouldn't be my fault, but it would be my fault for overextending myself or not pre-planning for that. Much like, it's kind of a weird thing that this is almost the same document that was presented a year ago, and in a whole year, we couldn't, like, work on it, knowing it's a problem, and just because Grants Pass, Oregon, you know, spent, who, could we even afford? If there's, if there's a problem with this document, can we afford the litigation that might come from this? I mean, Grants Pass probably had a hell of a bill, and who, how did that work out in the Supreme Court? I mean, that's a lot of legal time. Who paid for that? Interesting question. I'm going to present a couple scenarios where this could directly affect taxpayers. So what if we have some homeless individuals from a neighboring city? Mishawaka, Goshen, South Bend, Middlebury, all these places, right? They decide to be snowbird homeless, right? Gets a little cold, they set up a little tent, makeshift, could just take a sheet, "Hey, it's my tent. Go to 311," because they all seem to have cell phones, self-report. "I've got an encampment. Please come down." Maybe the same day, I don't know how fast 311 works all the time. But they go through the process, they're, they comply, right? Their stuff goes into storage. They go to the shelter for one night, they're totally, totally within their rights to check out the next day. Hop a train, go to Florida for a couple months, knowing that they got 60 days to get back and claim their stuff. This bill doesn't account for that. It's, it's, it's just so many holes, left and right, where the taxpayers, the people that are losing our jobs in the RV industry right now, people are getting laid off constantly. Our production is half what it once was. And so we can't foot the bill for Mishawaka, Goshen, you know? It seems kind of crazy. That's one instance. What about metal scrappers? They might have legally, illegally acquired copper wire, put it in a cart, and they don't want to store it because they're going to wait for copper prices to go up. Now, the city is storing their copper, waiting for copper prices to go up. The biggest thing I see is this 48 hours to move your stuff. Sure, it's nice, whatever, but we have a lot of parks in this town, we have a lot of corners. I mean, you know, I've got an encampment that, I've got stuff that was left at the end of State Street, which happens to border city property. So that stuff could have fallen under this ordinance. And they could just move every 48 hours. It's a cat and mouse game. So they're in one park today, a couple days, they move to the next park, and the next park. At what point, you know, if this ordinance overrides all the other ordinances because they're camping, right? Now they're no longer loitering, right? So they could literally stroll into the park two days before a big event. Rhapsody in Green. I mean, they could have rolled into the, into the Central Green last Friday night, last Saturday night, and screwed up whatever was going on down there. And can't move? I mean, it's kind of crazy, but this almost gives them the right to stay for 48 hours. And then if they move to the next place, the next park, they got another 48 hours. We got two, I mean... I think it's shameful that this is what we ended up with after a year of tabling it. And I think the real problem is, is that we haven't addressed the overriding issue of homelessness and how do we manage it? We're not managing it. We say we're going to put it on, we're non-government agencies to assist individuals experiencing homelessness, which is great. We have a lot of those in town. My concern is, is why do we have such a scaling, that's a social-economic issue, but I personally feel compelled to, to bring up this elephant in the room. You know, when I drive by the homeless shelter, it used to be the faith mission of Elkhart. You know, we take care of our people, right? Great, it's been around a long time. I don't know if we could measure the amount of improvement, because, you know, we moved them off Main Street. When I came back to town and everybody wanted to get them off Main Street, moved the faith mission, great. The Hall of Fame built their new thing, we got an empty building. Did we put anything in place? Did we work with them to manage? Did we create an ordinance? We somehow back-room negotiated the situation and got them over there. I don't know, some, some people were involved, or some people were part of that. It was probably a great opportunity, but an opportunity lost, just like this could be a huge opportunity lost if we don't do better than this. But we have a, basically, a non-for-profit, small business, is a family business, much like a lot of family businesses. But if I had a restaurant, I feel I'd be regulated, whether it be my liquor license, my health code enforcement. You know, I'd be extremely regulated. We aren't regulating our non-for-profits in this town where they're actually doing good with the city money and the city resources and being equal partners in the process. It is now the faith mission of Michiana. It's on every truck, it's on the sign when you drive by. Well, of course, they've scaled, because now they moved over there and it's on Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, and due to the homeless shelter being there and scaling and being bigger, there's really no other businesses over there. And they've acquired all the other adjacent properties. It's, it's, it's a big, small business that doesn't seem to be regulated in any form. It just keeps scaling, it's millions of dollars a year in their program. Faith Mission of Michiana. Well, that's how they market themselves on Facebook. We know how powerful Facebook can be. I mean, we don't really like to have the conversation on Facebook, but they're marketing themselves as the savior of all of Michiana. Well, that's a big, big, big radius. We can't solve that problem as the city of Elkhart, unfortunately. I'll leave it with that, but you know, it's, we can't pay to store people's stuff. I mean, it's, that's crazy.
Thank you. Is anyone else?
Jay Little, 1300 Eden Street, Elkhart. I don't bring the Bible with me too much, I don't carry one around with me too much because I believe very much in the separation of church and state, but I want to read something to you out of the book of Matthew. And the king will say, "I tell you the truth. When you did it to one of these, of the least of my brothers and sisters, you did it to Sorry, Mr. Mishler, I'm not trying to, I think it's very important that we think about that. The other thing is that, being a Caucasian, I've never been told to move from a neighborhood because I wasn't welcome there. If this ordinance is what Lori said it is, that would give police the opportunity to use it inappropriately. And to Tom's, to both Tom's points, both, both Thomas and Tom, to their points, what kind of litigation is that going to cause us? My final thought. I brought this book to you guys before. Sam Canonis, he wrote two of them. I would suggest you get them and read them and understand what's in them, because it's powerful with regard to drug problems that we are having in the United States. And also, one final thought, the biggest homeless, the biggest new group of homeless people in the United States are people over 62. 62. Now let that sink in. How many of us here are over 62? Or close? I'm 50, I'm 58.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Saying none, I'm going to close the public hearing, return to the council floor, any other council discussion? Mr. Hinky?
Not giving you my age, Jay, so don't try. But I would, I do think, I always appreciate Thomas's wisdom on this. But I would, I, I do think, I always appreciate Thomas's wisdom on this. We brought back, someone brought back, um, this ordinance from a year ago. We don't know the intent, why it came back, but I will tell you, six months before that was a homeless bill of rights that came up, and it seemed popular, it seemed like a feel-good piece of legislation, and I find this no different than that. 3.5 million people become homeless in this country every year, that's a huge amount of people, multiply over 10 years, and I think few are taking, um, any data to say, what's the cause? Where's the trend? I will tell you, um, according to literature, uh, so it is cognitive, um, neural issues, including dementia, psychological disorder, a good amount are addicted either by medications, prescribed or unprescribed alcohol. In our region is a huge factor. Uh, Wernicke Syndrome, which is alcohol-related syndromes, would be another one. I have treated quite a number of homeless people at, at my nursing home. Interesting, 50% wanna stay long-term because it's a nice place to sleep and you get three meals a day and medical attention, but the other 50% wanna leave because they're unwilling to part with their social security money or disability monies. Not giving it up for anything else other than usually their addiction. And I've talked about that before in this particular room. There are, I counted, over 20 current laws on the book that we could utilize and somehow don't. And if you'd look up national statistics, it's because we don't wanna clutter the courtroom, we don't wanna go find people who don't show up for court, we don't wanna figure out how to find them, but I'll tell you, that's part of the answer. That is part of the answer. Because if we don't hold them long enough to determine if it's a mental disease and we could help, if it is a physical disease and we can help, or if there's some other reversible ailment. The difficult ones that I find very challenging and hard to accept are those who had a medical crisis and lost everything they had due to medical bills. That's a real thing. But currently, if someone's on my personal property, I call the police, the police come out and they remove them. How it is, that's how it is. There's solicitation law, theft, common nuisance, noise, trespass, drugs, firearms, unlicensed animal, rape, panhandling, curfew, littering, loitering, public indecency, guns without permit, defecation, urination in public spaces, public indecency, we've got laws. We, we just have a bunch of laws. We don't enforce them, and it's well-written, if you would Google, um, police enforcement of homeless people. And there's a real issue there, because what do you do next when they don't abide by normal processes? How do you get them to court? How do you get them to show up for these, uh, things? But Elkhart City, as it normally does, um, is a great giving community. I appreciate Pastor Lori in giving me time this past week, but I would also agree, uh, there's Tom over there, um, that she is an expert in our area on homelessness, and that she makes no bones about the measures in which she has grown to know. On the other hand, because we've been a big caring community, we have made things work and we've overlooked and we've allowed to the point where that is the unspoken law. If you don't enforce it, that's, that's the new law. If it has been allowed for a period of time, that is the new law, and it's hard to undo that. So, um, I find, um, as Tom did, we should've done our homework, we could've done better, we could've put this into place. There's plenty of ambiguity, uh, there's plenty of, um, non-measurables in this particular ordinance that could not hold up in court. Any savvy lawyer would eat us alive. We intend to, but how did you make that one different than the other one? We talk about the people that we won't enforce, uh, from faith mission and those that have been kicked out, not allowed to go back, well, why is that? Has anybody looked? I'll tell you what it is. Aggressive behavior, rape, illegal drugs, handguns, they can't come back. So, what Elkhart is saying, well, those are the ones that we'll allow to stay on the streets because they're not accepted anywhere else. That's exactly who the police need to pay attention to. And in fact, there should be some cooperation with all the local agencies, because faith mission has an obligation to all of its residents for safety. They must. No different than my building, it's safety for the mass first, and they have a tough population to work with. When you can't really fully investigate and know all the background, you have a hard job at hand. So, people cannot always go back. There is a significant cost, but I do believe there is an increased cost when we pick up personal belongings. One, it's us going to pick up their stuff. Be it full of needles, be it DNA, be it blood products, be it whatever, we're putting our people at risk. It could include a firearm, it could include illegal drugs, it could include legal drugs that are needed every day to manage disease. Um, it could include personal identifications or the only heirloom I have left of my family, and here, the city would be solely responsible to manage it. And that's not a good position to be in either. So, I find, um, that we're making separate laws, which in my mind makes a second-class person, and I'm not in favor of that whatsoever. None of us want to feel like that, no matter where we are in our life, I don't wanna be a second-class anybody or a separate segment of people, it's all about inclusion, if we would look at our history, and what we preach on this floor is inclusion. So, as a minimum, I would hope that we would either table this, put this to committee, if we're serious about it, and look at the language in its entirety, uh, get it to legal, uh, look at, which I think California is the leader of, uh, the lawsuits that are coming back on such ordinances, because the definition of domain, domain, you can't enter my home without a search warrant, it's my domain. But they're finding that a tent, a camper, a trailer is also classified as your domain if that's your primary living residence. And we haven't even thought that part through, but it's on the books. We can look at the struggles other states are having right now, and we should learn by that as opposed to taking our day in court and learning it firsthand. So, I do think the least we should be doing is to slow this down, think it through, it didn't pass a year ago with reason, the courts, um, have left it open and ambiguous, but it doesn't mean our ambiguity, uh, is gonna be law of any significance. How do you measure success? How do you do that? When the population's growing every day, how do you measure success? So, I, I think we could do a lot more if we actually screen people for mental disease, for health disease, access to medications, access to Heart City, Minority Health, and everything we have to offer. Let's get them in a better place than we find them today. So, thank all of you for those who do help in this situation. I hope as a city, we can do a better job of managing it forward as opposed to a piece of feel-good legislation that puts property owners at risk for all of our liability.
Thank you. Mr. Michler?
Thank you, and thank everyone for, for coming as well, this is a very important topic for our community. First, I think it's important that we recognize that homelessness is real and it's a very, uh, serious condition nationwide. And I use that term, um, condition, because like Councilman Henke, I'm in the healthcare field as well. And in the healthcare field, we try to treat, um, something like this by finding a cure, and we've worked together in a bipartisan way to do that on this council. And we have, we've put money towards Heart City Health, we've partnered with our friends in Bristol, Goshen, and the county in supporting an urgent care mental health crisis center. We've added social workers to our police force to help these people find, uh, the care they need. So, when we take so many steps in treating the root cause of homelessness, this just feels like a placebo. There's no evidence at all that these ordinances work. There's nothing that says this is gonna work. There has been no studies done, no peer-reviewed evidence that state these work anywhere. If anything, they put our community at risk for liabilities like Councilman Henke stated. Another thing that we have to consider as well, while we do have the faith mission, we do have guidance ministries and other NGOs that are willing to step up and help those in our community that need it the most, their resources are not unlimited. And nothing in this ordinance provides additional support to them. If all of these people who are on our streets suddenly show up on their doorstep and they need care, yes, they might be able to help them for a day or two, and some of them might indeed go into long-term support, but they might not have the resources to do that. And I, I strongly feel that if we're going to push the burden onto them, that we should at least set aside any money collected in a fine here into a separate account to help those NGOs. Um, you know, they say we're the city with a heart. It's our motto, and I know many of that, many of us take that literally. So, for, for me to see this ordinance come in front of us again, you know, when we've made such great strides together as a community, as a council, as an administration, it, it feels like a step backwards. And I'm, I'm sorry to see it in front of us, and I hope that we can find, uh, a way to help those in our community that need the help the most. Thank you.
Angie, would you do a roll call vote? I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, I would like to speak on behalf of Faith Mission. Uh, I had the opportunity of speaking with, uh, Director Mike Perez, and, uh, we took a tour, and I've been through there quite a few times, uh, go there at least once or twice a week for lunch, sometimes for dinner, um, and to answer, uh, in regards to the resources that they have, and one of the questions I asked Mike, if everyone who are on the street now had to come there, would you have enough room? And they do. We even went as far as, uh, we know there's people who come from Goshen, from South Bend, and, and, and they do come in busloads, and everyone has had a space, more than a day, more than a two, it, it extends. So, it's not just one day, it's just not two days. They have unlimited resources, and he's not here today to speak, but with me, um, and I hope he doesn't mind speaking on his behalf of Faith Mission, and, uh, families, if they go there, there's a separate dorm, um, they, they have to be restrictive of the people they have coming there because they do have families. Sex offenders are not allowed, arsonists are not allowed. If, uh, family, uh, if they want to move and become, uh, upgrade to become a resident, there are rules, because there are families involved, there are children that live there. And, uh, and, and rules, you have to have rules, everyone has to have rules. And, um, I thank you, Ms., um, all right, Ms. King, um, you did, um, take the time to speak with me, and, uh, but there, there's resources. I don't want anyone, and this is my personal, um, comment, sleeping on the bench when they are out of extreme conditions. I don't want a 60-year-old, 18-year-old, my family, anyone's family sleeping on a bench, they have plenty of rooms, they can come from the heat, they're air-conditioned, in the wintertime, they have heat. They get up in the morning, they have breakfast, they have showers, Ms. Lori King has showers. They can wash their clothes. They can go back for lunch, they can go back for dinner, there's a certain time they have to, um, sign in for a bed. If they're, both dorms are filled to capacity, there is an overflow, and not one time has it reached capacity. And that's all I wanted to say.
All right.
I'd like to speak on behalf of all the citizens of Elkhart. I've, I've talked to several people about this issue, and I've lived in Elkhart all my life, and I, I remember a time when we didn't have these kinda issues. But, the homeless, like, the time the King has said, there's, there's options in Elkhart. And I think what we need to do is find out why are these people homeless? That's the question people ask me, why are they homeless? Is it because they need education? Cuz we have a great school system. Is it because they need skills? We have a great career center that will provide you with skills. We have places like Goodwill that will, will train you to work. Some people say, is it because they don't want to work? Well, that's not a good choice, cuz I could quote scripture too, about what scripture says about if you don't work, says you shouldn't eat. But, why are these people homeless? But, these people don't have the right to block the Riverwalk? I talk to women all the time, say, I used to walk around the Riverwalk, but I don't feel comfortable anymore. Some of the comments been said to me when trying to go past this group of homeless people that gather there on a regular basis. It's not fair to the general public that they can't critique of the Riverwalk, that's why we built it. We've been working on the Riverwalk for many years, some of us been part of that, and it's not fair. The faith mission is a great place where you can get assistance, but as was said by one person here tonight, what about the private entities that have to deal with these things? Faith Mission is right across the street from Water Tower Place, and I talk to the people on a regular basis at Water Tower Place, and they're concerned when Water Tower Place is a secured building, you have to have a key fob to swipe to get in. Well, somebody let, a lot of people that don't wanna follow the rules at faith mission, they come over to Water Tower Place and they sleep in the halls at night, and it scares a lot of the seniors that live there. They don't want that. Water Tower Place is owned by La Casa, so this is an issue they've asked me and others to address with La Casa. What are we gonna do to keep people out of this building that don't rent there and shouldn't be in there at night? But, to go around town and see these encampments, they, they're eye-sore. But each one, each person needs to be evaluated and say, why are you homeless? There's, you have to make good decisions. If it's because of drugs, you need to stop using drugs. If it's because of alcohol, you need to stop using alcohol. You know, some people, you, you can't coddle these people, you gotta make sure that they realize life is a series of goo, good decisions or bad decisions, and you can make your own. Nobody makes those decisions for you, but if you choose not to follow the rules that faith missions or guidance ministry have, that's your choice. But it's not fair to the rest of the public to have to put up with can't even use the Riverwalk because it's blocked. My neighborhood, we are very caring, Pima Ran Neighborhood Association, twice this year, people have come to my house to get me to go see somebody on the ground. When we, in Elkhart, if you see somebody on the ground, you assume they need help. That's the way it used to be. Right there by the Elkhart branch of the library, by the old Sears Building, there's a pathway there. Twice, we've had people laying on the asphalt, and people came to my house to go down there to see what was wrong with them, and they were out of it. And I said, are you, are you okay? You gotta ask them, are you okay? We don't wanna get to where we assume they just homeless and they're asleep, somebody could be hurt and need help. But both times, they didn't want help. The one, he didn't like what I was saying to him about his decisions he's making, I said, it sounds like you don't wanna follow the rules nowhere. And he finally left, and then the other time, we did end up calling the police, cuz he was gonna lay there and sleep all day. But, other people coming home were concerned, there's a guy down there laying on the ground, sleep, who sleeps on asphalt? Elkhart care. But, you know, these people need to do better by themselves, and, you know, we welcome them. I know people that've been through guidance ministry, I know people that they've reached out and helped, and I know some of the way they think and the way they do things. If I lived like that, I'd be in trouble too. But, you know, I just think we have to consider the whole city. We just can't make rules and just ignore stuff for just part of the city. Our business community, they want this ordinance, cuz they're tired of some of their customers being ran off. So, you know, I, I'm concerned about all people. I love people, I'm a people person, I talk to everybody I meet, incl- I talk to everybody I meet, including the homeless. You know, I was a meter reader for a long time before we went high-tech, and I ran into the homeless on a regular basis and talked to them. And so I think I've had as much contact with most people in the room, with the homeless. But you know, I don't necessarily agree with the way they think. They, you know, they think that you can block a street or come to a public place when you know a public event is about to happen? That's not fair to whoever put no event on. So you know, the Supreme Court made a decision, you know, everybody rah rah Supreme Court until it come to something they don't like. Right, but now, here the Supreme Court made a decision, and this ordinance is in order because of the decision that the Supreme Court made. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Ms. Tynes.
You know, this is one of those that, to Brent's point in terms of it affects everyone, everyone differently, and this is not to criminalize those that are in these living conditions, but we do have another population that it is, I hate to say it, fearful of how some are living and how, and, and so, you know, appreciate all of the efforts. I always say that Elkhart is resourceful rich, meaning we have a lot of organizations and services to support families and businesses and all sorts of things, and that's why I use the phrase resourceful rich. And it does affect us all differently. I too have had more on the side of, you know, I used to walk here and there, and now I'm fearful to walk here and there. Not just the Riverwalk, but we're talking by Walker Park, we're talking, I mean, it's not on one centralized location while there, it may be heavier in some areas, it's all throughout the city, and it's affecting all of our residents. And there's different levels of homelessness. We're talking about what we see right now, but being in the school system, there's levels of homelessness that when people are, you know, living, families are living with other family members for X amount of time, which has nothing to do with this, my point is the level, the different levels of homelessness, homelessness that is out there that affects us all differently. So I will be supporting this, and this does not fix what we are talking about. However, it's a continuous start, and this isn't going to be a one-size-fits-all, and hopefully it's a work in progress, but it's something to address the problem right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hankey.
I appreciate a couple of things. Work in process, we haven't done anything in a year, so it's not really, this is just the starting of the same point we were a year ago. We've learned nothing, we've collected no data, we haven't talked to experts, we haven't done anything besides listened to a Supreme Court that made an opinion that allowed us to come up with something. Whoever brought this forward came up with the same language that was there a year ago before the Supreme Court ruled. In regards, you can't speak for everyone, Mr. Curry, you can speak to those who asked you to speak for them. So when you say you speak for the whole of Elkhart, you do by vote, I'll give you that. But even if people, you know, I called to attention the drug issue at Waterfall, Apartment 106, as you recall, and the public came out against, including the mayor, and made it a racial issue. It was not, it was about drugs entering the building.
David, 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 we're not on Water Tower, we're on a camping ordinance.
Mr. Curry brought it up, that they walked right over. I called the police tonight because I saw drug activity, and I took the plate of the vehicle sitting there and delivering to people right outside on La Salle Street in Benham. That's the area that we have to pay attention to. In regards to someone getting into the high-rise, that's a common nuisance law, it's a trespass law, it's a loitering law, they don't have access to bathrooms and so on, so it's probably public indecency, we have laws. My question would be, why don't we enforce them to homeless population as it would be enforced on us? If it was any one of us in this room, that law would be enacted. That law would be enacted. So I just have a difficult time, and I do say that we're making a second class when we make a second set of rules for a specific segment of people. Any one of us could have our identity by race, ethnicity, sorry, religion, any one of those causes, and if we get lumped into those people, because I just heard it, those people, they're not those people, they're homeless people. There's a title for it. Just call it what it is, but those people makes it look as though we've already segmented that group of population away. I appreciate the fact that if, Brent, people could say, they should just stop it, they should know better, we would have no drug problem in this country. It's just not a fact. If we just tell them, you should know better, you should make better decisions, gosh, we'd all be Baptist, wouldn't we, Brent?
Man.
So my point is, these are diseases.
We are digressing. We need to get back to the subject at hand.
These are diseases.
Thank you, I need to bring it back.
Drug addiction is a disease.
All right, thank you, thank you. I'm going to close out, last comment.
Thank you. You know, we've had some great conversation about this tonight, and for me, it circles back to the issues that I hear from the street with people who are approached by the homeless, either through panhandling, which we already have an ordinance against, that's 96.25, harassed directly. As Councilman Hankey stated, we already have a significant amount of ordinances in place. So my question is, how do we know that this one is going to be enforced? You know, for example, I spoke with Faith Mission myself earlier, and I actually called them last night at about 8:15, and they were already full at 8:15, with four people sleeping in a dayroom on mats that you would get at a gym or something like that to sleep on. So, yes, the Faith Mission has room and they have capacity, but you know, having worked for NGOs in the past, I can tell you that no NGO has unlimited resources and unlimited capacity. You know, at the core of this ordinance, it is an ordinance against sleeping. It is not going to address harassment on the Riverwalk, which we already have ordinances against. It's not going to address public drunkenness, it's not going to address these issues that many in our community are seeing and want to stop. We already have those laws in place. So why are we putting forward a potentially lawsuit-filled ordinance that doesn't help anyone and has no evidence of working in any community across the United States? Thank you.
Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please, on second reading? As amended, thank you.
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Oh.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heinz.
Yes.
Councilman Hankey. President Dawson.
Hi. Got a motion on third and final, please.
Third and final.
Second.
Got a motion for Mrs. Heinz, second for Mr. Fish. Angie, would you read this by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-27, an ordinance prohibiting the camping and storage of personal property on public property except in designated camping areas. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilman, or Councilwoman Heinz.
Yes.
Councilman Hankey. President Dawson.
Hi.
Passes six to two.
Thank you. Would you read Proposed Ordinance 24-0, that's 28, by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-28, an ordinance authorizing the city of Elkhart to issue its economic development revenue bonds and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto.
Thank you. Got a motion, the second, to adopt this ordinance on second reading.
No move.
Motion by Mr. Fish, second by Mr. Mishler. Counsel discussion. Mr. Huber.
Yes, good evening, Mike Huber, Director of Development Services, City of Elkhart. This ordinance is in reference to some economic development bonds that would be issued to the developer for the River District Zone 1 development. The Redevelopment Commission has a development agreement with EOZ as the primary development company, that's, we impact as the developer behind EOZ. This is a local development company with primarily, primarily local investors making up the equity investors in the project. They've already developed two buildings in the River District, completed, and this is for seven more buildings in Zone 1. Those seven buildings will account for approximately 120 new housing units and an additional 13,000 square feet of retail. It represents an investment of, a total investment of over $50 million, and the estimated net assessed value of the project after construction will be over $40 million. The Redevelopment Commission, as I indicated, has agreement with the developer where they pledged the 100% of the TIF of the project back to the project to support it through the use of economic development bond financing. Those economic development bonds will be purchased by the developer. We've created three allocation areas, as there will be three different bonds separately to the project to support the three different phases of the project and how it will be constructed to allow for the timing of the, of the resources to coincide with the timing of the construction of the project, and I'm happy to address any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Fish.
So, Mike, the clawback is City of Elkhart. We're first up, is that correct? If anything blows up on this?
So if this blows up and there's no development, then there's no TIF.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hankey.
Mike, just quickly, the cost of issuance?
The cost of issuance is being, the, the, the city of Elkhart is capped in its cost of issuance, as it's sharing with the developer, the developer's carrying the first $150,000 of cost of issuance. That's typically the cost of issuance for bonds like this is about 150, but we've negotiated that if it's over 150, the city will take the rest.
And are they, you're saying that they are buying the bond?
They are buying the bond, that's correct.
What percent?
There's no percent of interest.
Any portion of it forgivable?
There's no portion of this is forgivable.
Okay, are there any other city dollars in this?
This is the, this is the source of funding that's pledged to this project.
I think this makes very logical sense, both financially and for downtown Elkhart. I think this is appropriate use, and I support that.
Mr. Fish.
So just a added question, Mike, if it goes over the 100, let's say 150,000, where will that chunk of money come from? If you, we talked about your early.
Oh, so, so it will come out of, yeah, sure, it will come out of the downtown TIF.
The TIF, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Saying none, thank you, Mr. Huber. I'd like to open up to the public, is anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this ordinance? Saying none, return to the council floor, any other discussion? Saying none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please, on second reading?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heinz.
Yes.
Councilman Hankey.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Third and final, please.
Second.
Got a motion for third and final for Mr. Hankey, second for Mr. Fish. Angie, would you read this by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-28, an ordinance authorizing the city of Elkhart to issue its economic development revenue bonds and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heinz.
Yes.
Councilman Hankey. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero on third and final.
Thank you. There are no ordinances, the resolution is referred to committee. Table ordinance is a resolution, Proposed Ordinance 24-10 will remain table and hopefully come off the table next month, if everything works out. New business, ordinance on first reading, would you please read Proposed Ordinance 24-0-29 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-29, an ordinance authorizing advanced payment to contractors for the purchase of materials and authorizing advanced payments for projects, goods, and services within the purchasing policies of the city of Elkhart.
Thank you. If there are no objections, we'll pass this on the second reading. Would you please read Proposed Ordinance 24-0-30 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-30, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction, and installation of certain improvements to the sewage works of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, the issuance of additional revenue bonds in one or more series to finance the costs thereof, the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of such sewage works, the safeguarding of the interests of the owners of such revenue bonds and other matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of such bonds and all matters related thereto.
Thank you. If there are no objections, we'll pass this on the second reading. Would you read Proposed Ordinance 24-0-31 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 24-0-31, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction, and installation by the city of Elkhart, Indiana, of certain improvements and extensions to the city waterworks and the issuance of, and sale of revenue bonds to provide funds for the payment of the costs thereof, the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of such waterworks and other related matters, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of such bonds.
Thank you. If there are no objections, we'll pass this on the second reading. Would you please read Proposed Resolution 24-R-41A by title, please?
Proposed Resolution 24-R-41-A, an amended resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, declaring a certain area to be an economic revitalization area for the purpose of granting tax fees and benefits to Third Coast Commodities LLC, Evergreen Enterprises LLC.
Thank you.
Move for adoption.
Got a motion by Mr. Hankey, Mr. Fish for adoption, second by Mrs. Heinz. Counsel discussion. Saying none, okay. Does anyone in the audience, we'll open up to the public, is anyone in the audience would like to speak with regards to this resolution? Saying none, return it back to the council, any discussion? Saying none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heinz.
Yes.
Councilman Hankey.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Would you read Proposed Resolution 24-R-42 by title, please?
Proposed Resolution 24-R-42, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, confirming resolution number R-41-24 amended, which declared a certain area in the city of Elkhart to be an economic revitalization area for the purpose of granting tax fees and benefits to Third Coast Commodities LLC, Evergreen Enterprises LLC.
Got a motion by Mr. Fish, second by Mr. Mishler for adoption of this resolution.
Counsel discussion. Saying none, open to the public, is anyone in the public who would like to speak? Saying none, return it back to the council, any council discussion? Saying none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heinz.
Yes.
Councilman, or Councilman Hankey.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Would you read Proposed Resolution 24-R-43 by title, please?
Proposed Resolution 24-R-43, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, to approve two memoranda of agreements between the city of Elkhart and Third Coast Commodities LLC, Evergreen Enterprises LLC.
Adoption.
Got a motion by Mr. Fish, the second by Mrs. Heinz for adoption. Counsel discussion, saying none, I'm sorry, Mr. Hankey.
So I'm trying to glean here, real estate, seven years, and there were, there were a couple in here that I wanted to know how we came to seven years, what in your matrix? There was one that was passed in my absence, which was also seven years, $2.5 million, which in prior years would not have reached that length of abatement.
Third Coast Commodities is in one of our target industries, advanced recycling, they received, they received additional points for that, and also utilizing, or utilizing a formerly obsolete parcel, 1650 West Lusher, which is formerly Homer lumber.
And that grants, that was extra points, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you, good question, David. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience would like to speak with regards to this resolution? Saying none, return it back to the council, any more to council discussion? Saying none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heinz.
Yes.
Councilman Hankey.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Would you read Proposed Resolution 24-R-44?
Proposed Resolution 24-R-44, a resolution of the common council of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, authorizing the transfer of $85,000 from the full-time account to the professional services account of the city of Elkhart's Police Department.
Thank you.
Move for adoption.
Got a motion by Mr. Fish, second by Mrs. Heinz for adoption. Counsel discussion. Saying none, open up to the public, is anyone in the public? Saying none, return it back to the council, any council discussion? Any council discussion? Saying none. Angie, would you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Heinz.
Yes.
Councilman Henke.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. There are no vacation hearings. Other new business, is there any other new business for council? Mr. Henke.
If we could, at some point, it would be nice to know what's happening to the Middlebury School, old school, update on Middlebury Street. I haven't heard from that, but it is a social media topic, also suggesting that code enforcement zoning would look at Prairie Street. Several homes have been renovated, facelifted, but there are no permits in the windows. Also, there are cars in tree lawns. That just hasn't improved. Beardsley Prairie, Benham, Bristol, the auto place on Bristol that used to be an old credit union is parking more vehicles now on the grass. 1011 Benham Court had five vehicles tonight in the yard, and then there's a homemade tattoo sign spelled T-A-T-O, homemade tattoo, on Benham Court, and I think that's something that public health should be involved with. And then there are some, just some pieces that I'd just like information on, and that is, we talked about the seven-year property. Maybe you can just get back to me on that one privately. That's in the minutes, council minutes, or redevelopment minutes. There is the redevelopment in regards to Mike Huber addressed, the commission answered their questions about Freight Street resale, RFP, release, and I'd like to know what properties those happen to be, and that's in redevelopment commission minutes from June 11, '24, and I can leave that open for you. I am concerned with one that was in the Board of Zoning Appeal minutes, and the people that were appealing, BZA, stated on record that they call law enforcement and they might or might not come. And that's very concerning. I don't want that late on our police department. I just think that's one that we may want to follow up on as well. Simply, I don't want it to look as though the police do not respond when called, for any reason. That's just not a thing that we should have. I find that they always respond, and of course, I'm noisy. I am asking, this was Board of Public Works and Hunter's Pond Brookwood Drive drainage improvements, and I am still getting a lot of calls from that area, and I'm asking that we may want to have another neighborhood meeting just to get everyone back on the same page. They're worried about the water tables going up in their area when they're already at flood stage. I've called in a couple of times to city offices, and I felt comfortable, but I do think maybe we would better to reach back out to people and maybe have another, maybe when we do the Let's Talk Tuesday, that could be a topic brought up that would actually squelch some things. Finally, under Board of Aviation minutes, and this would have been from June 26, '24, there was a new item under there that it looked as though people didn't want to talk about, and it's an agreement of EKM and South Bend Control Tower regarding intra-facility operational procedures. Someone from that board wanted to ask a question, and they asked, there'd be no further discussion and move it to the next meeting, but I would like to know what that agreement is about. So I believe that would be you, Mr. Aviation. If I could get something on that particular thing, I would appreciate it. Thanks so much.
Anyone else with any new business? Saying none. Reports, Mayor Board of Works, Board of Safety, any department heads. Saying none. Open the floor for reports of Neighborhood Association. Mr. Mishler.
Yes, I'm happy to report that the Christiana Neighborhood Association cleanup happened this past weekend, and from all reports, it was a resounding success. It's a new neighborhood association, but so far, everything I've seen so far is they are pretty serious and well organized, so I look forward to working with them in the future and doing what we can to continue to improve our community.
Ms. King.
Yes, I want to thank all who came out, the ambassadors, the volunteers, Faith United Church on Sixth Street, and some of the residents on Cleveland Avenue for coming out and cleaning up. It was fun. And also too, I would like to thank everyone who's been calling into the 311. Our numbers are up, which is a good thing. That means people are using the 311 app, so continue to use that. And for those who are wanting to sign up for Neighborhood Association, please contact Patty. You can also call me, and I think next month would be the last month for cleanups. I'm not sure, but thank you all.
Now, the great Fifth District, would you also talk about, Mr. Curry, about what's going on with regards to tornado help?
Yes. Yes, the Pima Ran Neighborhood Association was directly hit by the tornado, so that conversation continues to go on. There is, the Small Business Administration is taking applications over at the Health Center on Oakland as we speak. I think this is the last week they'll be there. I went over to kind of see how it works, but some of the neighbors have went over and applied. There is a small interest loan that you can apply for, and also there is a $25,000 state grant you can apply for. So we encourage people to do that that had damage to their house, because we have people in our neighborhood that are very happy with their insurance company, and we have people with the same insurance company are very disappointed in how they responded to them. But our Neighborhood Association has been meeting on a regular basis now after the tornado, but we had planned our, our picnic for August this weekend, and so, but it rained Saturday. One of the few times we got rained out and decided to postpone it to Sunday, but we had checked with the Parks Department to see if the pavilion was available for Sunday as a backup since it was supposed to rain again. So we ended up at the pavilion, and we had a good time, and we want to thank the fire department for coming. They come, and people like to see the truck. People like the little hats they give them, and the coloring books. You know, our fire department, we thanked them for what they did during the tornado because our Neighborhood Association, a lot of the officers, we were out at 2:00 a.m. that morning before the mayor showed up at 4:00 a.m., and, but, you know, it was a great response, and it just kind of have brought the people just one step closer, reaching out, helping each other. But to sit down and have a picnic like that, it was good, and we saw some young teenagers going by, and we invited them in. It was five of them. They were from Pima Ran. We kind of tried to reach out to get to know all the kids in our area and kids going by. So they came in and sat down, ate with us. We gave them carryouts, and they said, they were happy to get to know us and glad that we invited them in, and I just think we can, need to reach out to our young people in our city more often. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else with science?
I'm sorry. He's telling me this. Yeah, so we, we had a good time, not last Saturday, but Saturday before last, for the first HOA in Ben Oak Neighborhood Cleanup, and it was educational. It was, the neighborhood has changed in terms of its neighbors, and so it gave us the opportunity to meet some, some new and some old, and we're able to help. I want to thank the Park Department, and I don't know the volunteer, Tanya or Brent or Mike can help me, or anybody else that's used them. Jamison's not here, but they have a volunteer ambassadors, yes. They came out and helped and helped some seniors get some things out that were a little too heavy, and so it was just a, a good time. Well, I was tired after those three little hours, but, yeah, but it was very well organized, so kudos to Patty and her team for the organization. A lot goes into it prior to that day in being ready for, to help the neighbors, so thank you, and we're looking forward to it for next year.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Coats.
I just want to offer kudos again to all the city employees. It's very clean. We have all kinds of activities, something that was new. I didn't know even was going in. Disc golf.